Okay, let's call the meeting to order, please. Everybody has the minutes from the June 6th meeting? Any questions or concerns? Now I take a motion approved.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approve of the agenda? Any additions or corrections to changes to the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Brunnmeyer. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. So that takes us to four A. 2016 Street Project Update.
Spoke with Beckhold this morning and they're starting on Fayet on Wednesday.
On Fayet Drive, okay.
Yep. They're gonna start grading that and moving everything. They're gonna give them notices. It'll be either today if they didn't or tomorrow. Let them know that they're gonna start working out there.
Okay.
And they also said steam, which is their saw that's doing the water stuff, they're gonna start on Thursday.
So the notice will just talk about access and...
Yep.
Does it say anything about duration and possible timelines?
They didn't. They also sent out a... They just got it to me today, a pretty basic schedule. They don't really have those timelines yet. Get into that probably on the first meeting.
Okay.
So we can see how long that they're gonna be on each one of those roads.
And then from Fayet, there was a sunflower?
Yep. Yep, same sunflower and then water roads.
All right.
Wolf, here you go.
Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess you guys have hopefully seen the cost estimate for the asphalt part of the concrete.
Seven second. All right, we're gonna back up here. Should we go? Why don't you just pull the gravel chair right there? So we do have a group here that wants to talk about... Have some questions or concerns about the project.
Okay.
So is there a person that's representing? Anybody? Is it Mike? Are you the only one here?
No, there's a few more.
Okay. Okay, do you have questions, Mike?
Yeah, just kind of some basic questions. I would kind of like want to know about when it's gonna start the project.
Do we have... Eric, is there a closer date for Sunflower? Are we thinking three weeks out possibly or...
It's probably at least that...
Depending on weather and everything else?
Yeah, because my guess is they're gonna wanna at least get Fayet up to gravel so that the residents can use it. And then my guess is they're gonna start milling kind of in there too. And so their asphalt mobilization, they're doing a bunch of that at once. So they'll do Fayet, they'll start doing the overlays and things like that so that that company isn't coming in and all the time.
Okay.
So they try to win with that.
Okay.
Okay, on that note, I'm just kind of concerned about the speeds on there. I mean, it's kind of like there's nothing really posted on there, you know? And with the gravel, we've had a few people in and out of there sideways. Putting asphalt in, I'm just kind of worried about the speed, you know?
So it'll be 25?
Somebody's gonna put a sign in there or post it?
Is there any signage on that street? Yeah, absolutely. That's easy. Piece of cake. We can do that no problem.
Also kind of concerned about, I guess, paying for this, you know? And there's not many of us on that part there. And I don't know exactly how the notes can be set up. But it comes pretty tough for people that are on social security or paying doctor bills and everything to even top up another, say $300, you know? It's gonna be tough.
I don't know how to address that, Mike. I'm sorry. I don't have an answer for you.
Maybe if there's a ballpark estimate, maybe? If you have a final figure or something.
I thought they were gonna work on that. Kind of give us an idea.
In 15 years, we got that finance into Bank of America at 2%.
So the specials will be...
Depending on how they break it up among the different property owners up there. If they go into that new subdivision, we'll make it...
Still the whole thing's gonna split between seven and eight homes. Is that the deal?
There's 14 lots, isn't there?
14 lots, yeah.
14 lots?
We've talked about that before, I guess. But whoever owns land up there, that'll be the majority of it, correct?
When is that other road gonna get put in that's going to the front end? The other side of Parkers? You were coming in with the road down there for that area.
We don't have a exact date for that right now.
They're gonna develop that area, why wouldn't a road be put in first?
They will.
But you're gonna pay ours first?
There's been surveyors up there. KLG's been up there and they've got it. They've surveyed.
Okay, so if that road doesn't happen and you're gonna pave Sunflower and that just does not develop over there, then we're stuck.
Still a city street that we wanna have developed into pavement.
The street will be developed anyway.
We're... In three weeks, we'll still be doing your street. And in three weeks, we may not have an exact date of when 11th will be.
So in other words, we've got nothing to say about it. You're catering to the developer and the heck with the taxpayers that have been paying taxes for 50 years.
Well, I'm not sure if I can change your mind and I'm not gonna try to.
No, because you're working for the developer. It'll look nice, but if they don't come in, tough crap.
Anybody have any other questions or that we can try to answer?
Maybe one more. As far as upkeep and everything, kind of concerned about the two, the street that goes, say, down towards, back towards the RV part, the main street right there. And I know they've tried as far as cutting out blocks or whatever, but if you're not paying attention, you could lose the front end on it right now, you know? When you get down towards the RV part there. And I'm just kind of concerned, you know?
That road's being done too, Mike.
Yeah, if that...
We're milling that entire road, I believe, and that'll be overlayed too.
I know it's kind of tough because it's a downhill slope, you know, but just...
Yeah, it is in bad... It's in really bad shape. You're right. There were other roads that were on the list too that we considered, but that one, that is a heavily used road and we thought that would need to be done right away. Yes, sir?
How is the drainage going to be handled?
How is the drainage gonna be handled?
Sunflower?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna flow...
To the west?
It's gonna flow... No, the flow actually goes to Sunflower. So it's gonna go over. And when for our, we call it Williams Development, when that 11th goes in, it would go into a ditch and follow that to the north.
So it'll run to the east?
Just like it does now.
Except this town would be in a gutter and curb?
Yeah.
And it'll actually run and not just sit there in front of your homes?
And they can grade that area up there too to get it to flow a little bit better so it doesn't sit in front of your house as well.
Anything else? Okay, Commerce Center Parking Lot estimates.
Oh, yes, okay. You on the wild roads lane? Front row. I guess we're still gonna do that.
It's right now, we've done the foreging after it's done, so I... Yeah, yes.
So if no one does, build that hotel there, it'll just be...
It'll go to a dead end right now. And Buster here. He's gonna comment on the study that they're waiting for in the background. All right, Commerce Center Parking Lot estimate.
Yeah, I got this set out last Friday for you guys. The left column is the concrete form, which I believe you guys saw in the last meeting. The right column is the column for doing asphalt. And speaking with Monty, we assumed six inches of asphalt out there. Quite a bit cheaper than the concrete.
So the in-kind, in the notes you said in-kind could be the removal?
Yeah, we wouldn't recommend anything other than that.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to watch your... All right, we appreciate you getting this to us. I don't... We're not gonna make a decision on this tonight, but this... We... You all get a chance to look at this. Any questions about this for you guys? Okay, thank you. Engineering RFP. Monty?
Basically, I just put that on there so that you know, we didn't get proposals from any different firms. I guess it's gonna be in your hands now for them, how you see fit and determine if you wanna do any interviews. I've been telling the firms that contacted me that we're hoping they'll have some action on this by July 15th.
Good. So Monty gave us the scoring sheet there also and then our pile reading for each firm. So if you can digest that this week, hopefully next week we can get together and prepare notes and grade it all together. Imagine find the evening or a couple hours we can get together and do that, it'd be great. And Dan, give that a Friday from Monty. All right, thanks, Monty. 4D warranty deed for Hazen RV Park addition. So this is the deed that transfer the property to the parks, correct? So they can get things finished up there. Monty, what else you need to add to that?
I have anything else to add or something?
Okay. Anything outstanding there, Pat, we need to know about? So we just need a motion to approve this so we can transfer this over to the park district there and then to take care of?
Motion to approve.
Second by Brunnmeyer.
I guess since we brought up a while ago, we've kind of talked about, you know, I guess Parks and Recreation helped pay for that, basically, for the station or else. And if you give us back that lot that's up on this... Some progress, I mean, you know?
Have you talked to Dan or Mel Montz about that? Okay. But you're right, we did... You're exactly correct. We did talk about that and nothing's been moved on, so we need to talk to the park board again and remind them that that's the option we wanna have is to get that back. Okay. So it was... You're right, I don't think we did need it to them.
No, the city did. Going way back, I think the developer needed it. The park board holds a deed. You're talking about the...
The two on Sunflower up there.
Oh, those?
Yeah, those two.
Okay.
Not where the park is at?
Yeah, no, I know. We haven't needed those two.
Yeah, for our use. Any more discussion? Roll call. Wolf?
Aye.
Brunnmeyer?
Aye.
Open hour? Aye. Motion passed. Raffle permit common threads, quilters. Motion by Brunnmeyer.
Second.
Second by Wolf. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Citizen concerns, roads, RV park cemetery, Mr. Gootnick.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Difficult for me to stance.
Absolutely.
Don't allow...
Come forward if you wanna grab a chair. Come forward.
Been watching the additions at the RV park, the new acquired RV park. And what I've seen is very disturbing for me. There is no maintenance. I don't think there's been a blade in there since the snow melted. Chuck holes, grass isn't cut, air conditioner's not working in the convenience center. And I was just wondering, you know, what do we gotta do to get this thing taken care of? I was totally embarrassed, totally embarrassed. Yesterday, Sunday, there was a family reunion. Then I had to admit, yeah, this is what we get, you know, for roads, for maintenance on our RV park. There was people there from Montana, there was people there from Washington, there was people there from Colorado. It was sad.
Well, Mel, I tell you, we can... Ron, Ronnie works closely with the park board also if they need help. And if Parks wants us to help them do that, we will, we do it for them. So maintaining that is... That is... Monty, that is Parks. Is that ours? Is it shared?
Land is still ours.
The land's ours, they maintain it? Or... Okay. So it's a dual?
They control the RV park itself.
Okay, okay.
There is some settling right below the RV park side here, there's some settling. It's gonna have to be some dirt holes in there. And the chuckles are deep enough now to where they should be filled. A blade isn't gonna take care of it. The north RV park, not much difference. There is ruts in there from construction because they're not...
Okay.
I wanna know what's gonna be done about it.
Wolf, we'll address them.
Every road that we have, regardless of cemetery. You go into the cemetery from the north entrance and you drive east. You turn south, there's wheel tracks in there, give or take 100 feet long. They fill up with water. You don't wanna drive through the wheel tracks with water. You either drive on the east side and over there are cemeteries. You drive on the west side, the grass in the cemetery is the same thing. I don't think it's lack of equipment. You spend millions of dollars for... We got front-end loaders, we got skid steers, and we got motor graders. There's no damn excuse for that, though.
Okay, so you wanna address that at all or...
Yeah, I mean, all... All I guess, I guess I'll drive up there, take a look at it. I'll talk to Ron, I guess this weekend. That's what I have in mind. You know, just do some work up there. Not a problem at all.
There's some serious work. There's roads that need to be filled in up there. But it's such a damn embarrassing for me to have people from different states coming and... What is our pride and joy if one type just went down? I can't put it any other way. It's a mess. And I don't think there's a reason for it. So maybe in the very near future, that's gonna be taken care of.
Absolutely.
If you don't have an operator for that motor grader, I have 18 years of experience, I could keep somebody out to use it.
Thank you. We do, we have an operator.
Yeah, put him to work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel. 7A fireworks display permits. We have... We gonna deal with both of them at the same time or...
No, one is just for sales.
Okay.
The first one is just a display by the chamber.
Okay. And we need to approve that?
Yes, you do.
Okay. So that would be the chambers and they have fireworks displayed on the 4th of July. Okay, motion by Brunnmeyer.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Roll call.
Brunnmeyer?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Open hour? Aye, motion passed, thank you. Fireworks sales, application for memory fireworks, Wayne Hermes.
They are...
You gonna be in the All Seasons Arena?
They will be in the All Seasons Arena. They're finalizing their agreement with the state of their sports park district to get that.
And that's the same location down West Side is approved numerous times. And we need a motion for that too, please.
So moved.
Okay, yeah. Motion by Wolf. Second by Stern. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern? Aye. Brunnmeyer?
Aye.
Open hour? Aye. Motion passed. The easement property access for Mr. Hasep. And you all have an email with the image.
And the...
Right there?
Steve gave me another half hour today.
Steve, if you wanna comment on it, please.
Well, the only thing... His house sits over here and what this drawing depicts here, or these ones that show it here, is that this is the West Hazen subdivision. And then the next one shows the deed. So this, the bank area here is not dedicated property or anything like that. The city actually holds a deed for this. So, you know, at some point in time, I guess, that could be sold or whatever, but it's not an alley or a street right away. It's deeded property. And so what he's wondering about, you know, being able to get access along the east side of his property, the west side of the deck, get to the backside of the block, so I'll look.
Looking at that drawing, the alleyway comes about halfway down from the north and then the alleyway stops. When I looked at my drawings, I thought, boy, I can't build a property, anything on this backside of the garage unless I have guaranteed access. And that's kind of what I'm after here is having something in writing saying I'm gonna have access to something that I built behind my garage.
Okay, you see a puzzle? I wanna go back to that other one, Monty. What he's... What he's talking about is on the north end of the Hazen subdivision, it's cul-de-sac, West Hazen. The cul-de-sac comes in here and then actually is an alley that comes down partway, but it stops right here, basically where Fifth Street is. Where Keith Knott and stuff lives up there. It comes down and goes out this way. So I say this property here is different than what that alley up there... That is an alley up there that's deeded property with the bankers at.
So, sir, you wanna build a slab there beside the garage?
No, what I wanna do is I wanna put a carport up.
A carport.
To the north of line detached garage. And I wanna guarantee myself some sort of access to that carport.
So then the way that you have it kind of, like I said, leveled off right now on the east side through the garage, is that the area that you wanna...
No, it's actually, that's gonna be kind of the road kinda I wanna use to get back to that carport.
But that'll be about the width you're gonna use to access it?
Yeah, that'd be the extent of what I... You know, I have probably approximately 10 to 12 feet, which my propane tank sits on. It's just not gonna allow me enough room without... Without having some sort of guaranteed access here. I don't have enough property with help.
So you're just asking for access? You're not asking us to give that land to you for... To deed it over to you or anything like that? You just want access?
I want guaranteed access, I guess. I don't wanna build something and then all of a sudden you guys put a fence up and I can't get access to my carport.
Steve, one option that would be available now, I guess, is to give him an easement. Because again, that is deeded property, it's not an alley. We could give him an easement to allow him, you know, ingress and egress easement along that strip along the west side of the deck.
And there are no other easements in there right now?
I don't think so, you know?
There's power right there.
I mean, yeah, maybe it's a power...
Power easements. There's a power easement right next to my property when he came in.
Okay.
Marked everything for emptying, so...
Well, I don't have an issue with an easement for access to that unless somebody else has a reason why we don't, shouldn't do it.
I guess I just look at... And I'm not saying no, but if you've started, be prepared for the next guy to say, well, I want an alley in my backyard too. So then who pays for that extension of a supposed easement alley behind everybody's house going up to Fifth? Because everyone's gonna want it.
I don't know if we can stop anybody from driving down there anyhow.
Right. Well, and that's my question, but so if he starts it and you put a little road in or whatever and the next guy says he wants to do something, do we have to then put in a road for them? Or is it just you are driving at your own...
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay. Because I mean, that would be my thing is if he's got access back there, then the next guy's like, well, I want access back there too. Gives me a little bit more money.
But I don't know, hey, by seeing how much dirt I've already held here to make that an access, this is on my dime.
Yep. And that's what I'm wondering is the next guy gonna say, well, it'll be on my dime too.
That should be on your dime.
Right.
Or you're gonna have an issue if people start using your access to go down the backside there?
Actually, actually break the curb out there and make access to water drains. Get out there.
So we need a motion to grant an easement in there. That's mostly, yeah, absolutely. So if nobody has an issue with a reason why we shouldn't do it, then yeah, I think we should have a draw-up. With that, Steve, would you take care of that then?
No, probably if you take always the path.
Okay. Does he need the legal description or is this good? Is it on here? This is...
Well, no, there really isn't anything on there. It would be adjacent to lots, that would be...
All right, any other questions or concerns? All right, so we'll do them. Okay, thank you. Reports, 8A. President, I just wanna thank Judy for your time on the board. You've done a great job and just wanna give you a present card from the board and wish you the best and appreciate what you've done for us. Water is sewer. Streets.
I don't ask anything. I don't know, I guess the Kayleys wanted to raise and plant their shrubs. I spoke with them and it's what they like to plant their shrubs back off the street and probably develop. About 40 feet, if not more. And I guess what, I guess he'd like to try this fall is I guess just to put up a snow fence in that area just for right now.
See what happens with the snow?
Yeah.
Before he permanently plants something?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty... I think that's a good idea. Did you talk to...
Yeah. I said I didn't see a problem, I guess.
Starts dripping, pull the fence out?
Yeah.
All right. And Ronnie, you guys will be watching that closely, I'm sure. And so will the neighbors, Judy. Okay, all right. Perfect. Anything else? Okay, thanks. Finance, busing.
Nothing at this time.
So on the finance side, do you know where rapids are or rapids percentage budget we spent this year's budget at all? See it for... Okay. You can check with Monty this week and see if that will wrap, which will reach out to that.
Okay.
Great. And Mr. Hack is not here. HCD, Buster.
Right. Bringing up the speed on the two major issues that I'm still dealing with. We had the gentleman of the hotel out in the neighborhood, he was out in Hazen for a couple of days earlier, early part of the month, and I just visited with him yesterday, and we're anticipating to have at least a preliminary report on a market study. I'm hoping next week, and if we don't get it next week, he told me definitely by the first week of July, so... As of right now, that's kind of, we're holding, you know, we're holding tight, depending on what the market studies is, has to say. The developer is working with a bank out of the Minnesota area, and, and we're looking at you doing a USDA, and USDA actually is the one that is requiring a market study. So hopefully, once we receive it, we'll, we'll satisfy those folks and move forward with the project. The second thing, of course, the major project that we have going is the Pioneer Home. We're getting a lot closer to what I say getting our money released to us. We have really one last issue to deal with, and that is the legalese and the transfer of the land, and the replating of that, that whole block area up there, and we've been, Pat and the surveyor from Altech have been working on that, on that piece for us. So, once, and I think we're, and I don't want to, words in Pat's mouth, but I think we're in pretty good shape now. We got some of the real delicate or questionable stuff taken care of, so I think from here on in, it should, it should flow a little smoother, shouldn't it, Pat? And so I'm hoping, and I don't know if the timeline, timeline would allow that to happen, but for the, for your board meeting on the Fifth of July, we were kind of looking at that maybe as a target date to see if maybe we could get the land transferred in place. Now, again, I'm not sure if that'll be all enough time for that to happen or not, probably not, I'm betting. Okay.
Let's go through the planning process.
Okay, and that is the last piece that is holding us up in terms of getting our money released to that, and of course, with that, what ends up happening, and once we'll get it released, you know, then we have to bid, let bids, and we have to at least publicize, we're talking in days, and, and those kinds of things, so... So hopefully, we're gonna be still be in a situation where we get some, we can do some foundation work this fall, you know, and get things buttoned up for the winter months. That would be our, that's our, that would be our long-range goal, and I think we have enough time to do that, I'm, I'm hoping we do. We did, uh, we did get our contracts signed with Williamsville and Company as a construction management firm, so that was one other piece that we needed to get taken care of, and that's in place. So like I said, the last piece is, is going to be the, the land getting there, and it really was kind of a... There just were a lot of issues to deal, let's put it that way. So, questions?
Is our new tenant in his location at the power center?
Yes, he is, but, you know, he's been out of the area because of the family illness, and so, so I have not officially been into the site since he's been gone, because there's a big security sign up there, says, do not enter.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Buster. All right, before we move into old business, I want to back up to five C, request citizens, Hilmar Weidrich. Hilmar?
Yes, we were wondering if you wrote a check for us yet, we've had air conditioning in. And we're also wondering about the parking lot. There's grass, a little bit of grass there, where the swimming pool was supposed to put, put grass there. We're wondering if we put in the blacktop, whether we cover that, dig it out, do whatever, and get rid of the grass, that's an extra expense for us, and it really doesn't do any good, and we sooner have a wider parking lot so we can, because we, well, maybe, the older people, I suppose somebody can't turn their neck around to see where they're backing. I've had my car bumper painted twice already, and, and it is a little crowded on the west side, when you, when you really look at it, when it's across parking like this, and it's getting, and if we, if all of it, we could take another ten feet of the west, and maybe put one line on the other. And then today somebody come up with that, when you walk out your car in the parking lot, somebody backs over, backs, could get run over, and if we do the whole parking lot, leave a space about eight feet wide in the middle as a walking path, instead of walking in the lot, to go to your car, you go up the path, you go to your car either which way. But the big issue is, the park, the air conditioning is in, we're broke, and we were wondering if you'd help us out, you kind of said that you would, with air conditioning, and, um, in the parking lot, if we, if we can get it all, or it costs much more to do it all, or maybe they figured it all, and they... But the grass and the railroad ties have got to go, all they do is hold up snow, the railroad ties do, and the grass is a nuisance as far as we're concerned, because some, we have to hire somebody to cut it, and we'd like to get rid of that if we can.
Well, that's, that's a great idea, obviously, that's not something we planned for, this is the first time I've heard of it, and our plans have already been engineered and, and accepted, approved, but what was the cost of the air conditioning?
Twenty-one thousand installed.
Okay. Is it working well?
Yes, beautiful. The first time I've ever heard a cook say it's cold in the kitchen. It's very good, very good.
Okay.
Steve? Just a comment on going over, and maybe Hilmar remembers, I don't know if anybody else, nobody else has been here, well, when they tore out that pool, I just tore out the quotes, I don't know that they tore it out.
The walls are still in there.
And so what you've got is you got a pool, and I think the walls might have been crumbled in?
No, they're still set.
Oh, they are, okay, so now you've got the concrete floor, I think, maybe they punched holes in it or something, but when I first came here, well, the new pool was already open, but there were some problems with that settling in the center, and you remember?
We've talked about it before.
And, and, you know, so I don't know if you want to pave over that, you might go put your car in there and end up in a sinkhole. You know, maybe gravel or something like that, but I don't know about asphalt.
Well, that's something I think we have to look at down the road, not at, at this point. We, you know, we are gonna be doing a big portion of your parking lot already, which, I'm not even sure what the dollar figure is on, on that alone.
And there's, you know, towards the front end on the east side, the cement is still there, it all broke up, and, and in kind, I thought they were gonna halt some of that out, to get all, haul it up, because you, I'm sure you can't blacktop over that, because edges are off, you know?
On the south end, or the?
On the, on, no, on the north, it's all on the north side. On the, on the, on the south end, it's grass behind the building, and that's, that doesn't bother me anything, but when you come into, on, on the east side of the parking lot, when you come into the, to the senior center on the east side, be careful, you take a oil pan over.
Uh, I can't remember exactly the size of the, the area we're doing in that part, in the parking lot, do you remember, Casey? I thought it was the whole north end from entrance to entrance that we were doing, up from the curb, or the sidewalk, where the grass goes down the slope, to your guys, the, the grass, where it's in the middle.
Thirty-one thousand, the length is one hundred and forty-two feet by seventy-three feet wide.
Do you hear that? Hundred and forty-two by seventy-three is the area we're doing there, and so it's gonna cost like thirty...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one thousand.
And you, and you're not even getting the bad part on the east side, I mean, that's where the cement chunks are sticking up, so...
Well, I believe that area we're doing water sits right there, right now, too.
Right, on, on the north way, north end? You know, may, maybe if you come up, I'll buy you dinner.
I'm sure it would be a pleasant visit, but I, I've been in there numerous times.
If you come in on the east side, and we're not the only ones that use it, you get a big funeral for football, and a lot is called field, so we're not... The liability is what I'm, I'm thinking with, because these chunks are bad, I mean, they're, they're sticking up this high, you know, you try and walk across that, you're in trouble every time, especially in the dark.
You, or do you guys walk that when you, when you measured it up, do you, are we getting to that area?
We are going right up to the concrete, I believe we had a discussion about if we wanted to do that or not, and I believe it was pronounced a lot on that concrete. Because we did mention it is in rough shape. But we, so we decided basically from the concrete north, and the same on the other side, so where the grass patches there in the center, from there all the way up to the entrances, the north is getting done.
So we're doing a portion of your parking lot?
Nothing from the grass east is going to be?
We park this way.
No, nothing from the grass east.
We park this way, we park towards the south, we, to the southwest and the southeast. You can take off, you come around the front, you go up to the east side, and then you go over all the cement and all that. If you park up further, you gotta walk across it, it's another dangerous thing, that's, I don't think they would sue us, but I think they'd go after the city.
Of course they would.
So, I mean, I'm just telling you what, I don't think it's gonna, unless you bring some good gravel in there to get rid of the cement and stuff until later on when you can go over it, because something should be, that should be covered some way or the other.
Well, at some point, Hilmar, we have to decide how much we're gonna spend on a project, and if it was up to you, we'd do the entire thing and the grass area, and we, we can't do everything.
Okay, but I was thinking sunflower lean, I went down that here the other day, and the ends, that shouldn't cost much, there were...
It's worth dirt right now.
That's in better shape than our parking lot. So anyway, and if you, and some help with the, with the air conditioning, it's, it's in, and it's working, it's, it's a better system than there was. So...
Well, the board want to write a check to Senior Citizen Center, they thought of the air conditioning unit?
You're all gonna give one. I tried not giving over that anymore.
You're right. Yes, Casey?
Don't we still have, I guess, money, money that's left to, to donate this year? Do you have that donation of five, it's like, like eight dollars or something?
Yeah, we, well, this one, yes, yeah, we, we scattered the new two dollars, no more, okay, so, eight dollars, we do this, I think.
Do you have recognition?
I believe that we, that we donate, I guess, um... Twenty-five hundred.
Okay. We have a motion from Stern to donate twenty-five hundred dollars to Senior Citizen Center for air conditioning aid. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Brunnmeyer.
Aye.
Wolfman Howard.
Aye, motion passed. There you go, hope that helps.
Anything else?
Good, and else, I'll probably take you up on that meal next week sometime.
All right. Are you sixty?
Forty-six.
Don't, it's gonna cost me nine bucks and two years.
Ten A, quote for access channel equipment replacement. We have a quote here from A.B.I., several quotes apparently.
Well, initially, they hadn't included the taxes, and so they just basically took the tax off. I'm not sure where we're at with the franchise agreement, but it's, I didn't notice I did pay an application for a grant for half of that amount.
Oh, you draw a midquote?
But I missed it a couple of months till we get back to it.
Okay, so we limp along until we hear back from Midco?
Wait until then, or I don't, the library's getting all kinds of calls, because the people can't watch the services and stuff from the access channel.
I think we need to wait a little bit and see what we're gonna get from Midco first, and we're gonna have to just take the heat a little more, I guess, since it's not cheap. Uh, where, Marty, where would we pull that out, or Nancy, where, where would we pull that out of our budget at? Really?
Pull it out of our general equipment.
Is it worth?
They want to do a follow-through or something.
Pat?
We're still on negotiations with Midco for the franchise renewal. Part of the negotiations is to increase the franchise fee from three to four percent. They, the franchise fee is really just a pass through fee to the consumers. It does generate a chunk of change for the city, but now goes to your general fund.
Okay.
You could certainly...
How close are we to a finalized agreement?
Well, as of today, we're, we're very, very close, I mean, we're just...
And they're not gonna pocket the four percent because?
Oh, no, because that's a pass through, so they don't pay it, I'm pretty sure, but consumers pay it, so... Their only concerns are, we, we did ask them to pay for the replacement equipment, and they chose not to do that, and they suggested that we apply for the grant. And then in response, we asked for what Midco has done for our community, what kind of a corporate citizen they've been, and today they replied, and I think they, they referred me to some website that said that they donated like fifteen hundred dollars towards something in the community, as they do in North and South Dakota and other areas that they serve. So it wasn't, you know, it wasn't...
No.
Resounding, we're a great corporate citizen, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, the board, does the board want to act on this now, or you want to wait until we hear back on the grant? Obviously, if the, we're close to finalizing the deal, which will, we'll be receiving more monies back on the four percent, which will probably pay for this. If that's the case, we... What's that?
In a year.
In a year, it would take, take about a year to pay for that, okay. And that's again, that's another fifteen-year contract?
It's twenty.
Oh, twenty, okay.
We all stretch short that, that, that a lot either.
Okay, what would the board like to do?
I suggest we wait and see with the grant. See if they're gonna offer something.
Okay. Agreed? Okay, all right, that's great, we'll see what happens here, hopefully it's, hopefully we hear back in a month or so. Eleven A, auditor's bond resolution, Marty?
Well, pursuant to North Coast Central tolling, the bond for the city auditor has to be set every year in June. It's either twenty-five percent of the funds that are under the auditor's control, or two hundred fifty thousand dollars, whichever is needed, so... Based on the last audit, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars would be the lesser of them.
Okay. We need a motion for this, please, to, to... Kinck motion by Brunnmeyer.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Brunnmeyer.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wolfman Howard.
Aye, motion passed, thank you. Copy or printer quote? Copier-printer quote.
As we're nearing the end of the lease on our current copyright, did get ahold of a couple of companies and got some information. Basically, I had visited with Chuck and their machines up at the police department. They're getting pretty old in there, so it's costing a fortune. Uh, we could keep the copier we have here, put it in the police department, and get a new copier in the office here. Basically, it would cost us a hundred dollars less than what we're paying now. The other one was, uh, that was from Marco, who currently have digital office centers. Was again, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the lease, but then they charge per copy. One of the other contracts included copies. So over the term of a five-year lease, Marco was the most, or least expensive at nineteen thousand dollars. Fireside was next at twenty-four thousand, and the digital office center was the highest, at thirty-three thousand over the term of the five-year lease.
So with Marco on the cheaper one, we could do that, ours to the PD? Okay. I think that's, that'd be my recommendation there, too. If that's what you're, the direction you're thinking?
That was, anyway, I was thinking.
Okay. All right. We'll need a motion if someone wants to do that?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. I've always hated dealing with these contract, copier contracts, they seem ridiculously expensive, but they can catch you when they want you. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Brunner Meyer?
Aye.
Paul Manau?
Aye. Motion passed. Surveillance equipment quote, West River Telephone.
Part of the plan with the new bus facility was to include some surveillance cameras, since they'll be so far away. When I contacted West River about that, they said, "Well, do you wanna build for the future, or do you just wanna get enough to go now?" So they quoted me three different options. One is the four-channel NBR, which you can hook up four cameras to it, plus then includes the hard drive and the cameras. But then he said we had the option, we wanted to go with an eight-channel or a twelve-channel NBR, which would allow us some, or sixteen-channel, excuse me, NBR, which would allow us some expansion should we wanna put surveillance in other facilities. If we got paid seven thousand dollars for our electricity over the grass, you could put a camera out there. So I guess if, however you wanna proceed on this. Basically, the difference between the four-channel and the sixteen-channel installed is about three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
For the difference?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, in my opinion, I think it's a no-brainer to go with the sixteen-channel for that, that much less.
What is that, a full scale? It's nice to have some outside of the shop.
Right. Further thoughts?
I agree, the sixteen-month kind of makes a little bit more sense. Sixteen?
Also has to have some expansion if you need it.
Right.
So then you guess install then? And so they would, they would go from the shop to?
Well, that would be additional. This one may include the three cameras for the bus bay, but, um, Steve said they had just done some out here for it. The exterior cameras are a little bit more expensive there, but yeah, you would have, we would have the capability.
Right. We could add it on later.
Yeah.
I guess I like, uh, you know, I guess consults are, I don't know, actually.
I would, too.
Shop, too, is what we're doing, you know, maybe.
Why, that would give me a different quote if you wanted to include three more cameras or something.
Yeah.
I mean, that would hold, it would be the same.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll get another quote for that.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you. All right. It brings us to approval of the bills.
We're a couple that we're adding, they should have one.
Yep.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Brunner Meyer?
Aye.
Paul Manau?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.